We are on.
I call this meeting of the Village City Council, wow, I heard. The Village City Council special meeting on six thirty Monday, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, two quarters. Uh, real quick before we get to any questions, just because I know you might have some interest in this tonight. Um, if any member of the community wants to speak on any item that is on the agenda tonight, uh, please complete one of the comment registration cards back and give it to either, um, the city manager or the clerk or the president myself as well. Um, as we are first, I will ask, uh, Baba Zee Lee as an indication with change.
Okay. God's desire to bless you is as great as he is and impossible to fathom, amen.
I put my allegiance to the right, the United States of America, and to the reward for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
I would say real quick, I got back in Las Vegas, I wouldn't read again, I had to try it on.
I'm not anything.
I had to try it. He never went.
Um, all right, I will, uh, take a motion to approve the consent agenda unless anyone has a little discussion.
Um, do you have any questions?
Yes, okay.
Oh, okay. All right, just check. We're ready with that. Yes. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion of Braxton, second by Keith, I'll go over all Braxton.
Yay.
Keith. Baba.
Yay.
John.
Yay.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Please. Start with that.
Well.
Uh, all right, we'll move on to item number four, consideration of coordinates seven seven nine pertaining to impeding or interfering with the building. First responders to perform with ease.
And this is kind of the years of the last.
This is taking a while, it was a program that provided some fear, you're competing with public safety, officer doing their duties, the police, fire, and yet EMS. Uh, someone that is impeding or interfering, they have to be warned first until they can stand twenty five feet back. They can continue to interfere, uh, they can be sudden, and, uh, we are maxed upon, this is five hundred dollars.
Now, as long as they're standing from nothing away, they can still stay on.
They can feel, they do not have to be warned if they are interfering repeatedly, they have to be, they have to do, if they don't, then they can be silent. But if you're assisting or helping, you're not interfering repeatedly.
All right.
It, I think the thing that everybody should should do is, um, when an officer is, you know, doing work, what you do. A lot of times you get family members involved and things like that, so they sometimes get a rush, you know, just emotions going on. They try to back them up as much as possible, but this will help, you know, help do that and explain what you have to do. There's a lot of them, I think a rest of the community there, because of the interference operation or the stop, whatever it is, so I think it's a great thing to help those.
The safe off case effect, I'm going to the first, Ken's going to be on the first order. What does this order to not, uh, chiefly, and specifically one of its, uh, ordinance available, so they could just issue a citation instead of the rest of something.
That's good too.
Yes.
Once people settle down a little bit, it all comes back to reality.
Does the, does the safe off require an other or?
Well, the safe off, uh, would require an arrest and the property, they have, they'd be a promise. So for the court, these are the defensive arguments.
This is de-escalated processing a little bit.
And this doesn't, this, this, the House bill won't supersede this ordinance.
They have both options available to them.
Oh, there's lots of tricks. Okay, great. Any questions? No, I'm doing this, okay. I have no question. Sorry, Jack, go on.
I want to say, so, you know, the addition of the motion, following that motion of, uh, the schedule. Uh, there's emergency calls, even though they, they will use separate motion in the national.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the fourth and seven seven nine. Right.
Second, check on us.
Second by David, motion of Braxton, second by David Braxton.
Yay.
David.
Yeah.
Baba.
Yeah.
Keith.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah.
Motion passes five zero.
We were just asking you to make a motion, I'll make a motion for the emergency.
I'll, I'll say.
Second by Baba, I'll go over Braxton.
Yay.
Baba.
Yeah.
David.
Yeah.
Keith.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, and move on to agenda item number five. So this is a consideration regarding adhering for an appeal of nuisance abatements of one zero eight five two seven placed at the request of the residents, Donna, and Matt Rice Johnson, for high grass weeds, public nuisance, discarded items, trash, and building materials. So I think we're going to start with Ken, if you have some numbers you want to add on this one for, we want to be, who was talking?
Uh, okay, Ken, here is where we definitely premiere, um.
Again, Mike. Make sure. Yep.
Okay, uh, so, uh, we have three items on that property. Uh, one for high grass weeds and property, and some of the, uh, nuisance, uh, with the structure. Uh, the building, which is a vegetable container, uh, dirt mound, aisle, and front yard, uh, that has a new overgrowth presentation on it. Uh, the other one was, uh, just made of the dirt pile, and then the other one was for building materials and some discarded items on the property. Uh, we started over developments on sixteenth of September, uh, within a ten day period, uh, the property owner requested an appeal of the abatement. Um, I think, uh, partly in lieu, um, of the next time to, uh, complete the projects that they have over there, um, with several of the rest.
Any questions, Ken?
What the truth.
Um, should the rookie man, basically, what are the dates on those?
Those were the ones that sent your pictures that protected today.
Yeah, so when we started the abatement, we had pictures today of the abatement, which are the sixteenth of September. Um, also, my good portion officer took pictures of today, and then we kind of compared, uh, the state of the property today as well as what we did.
Those are the ones we did?
Yes. So the pictures on the screen right now are the ones that I can't see. Uh, it probably, I mean, it was worth noting, uh, the pile of dirt is in the driveway, it's been removed and moved to the planter. Um, so that's some work to do along, on into the planter, um, some of the structures, it's been explained made that they use ones for, uh, in the process of, uh, concrete pours, um, and then just a general, uh, cleaning of the, or these quarters.
So are the plants that are growing out of the planter right now, or those that have been, oh, or? It looks like they were shoveling over the air.
Uh, I think those were.
Did we, or are they?
Those are tomatoes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Probably here they have been, uh, my chances, sorry, you all are, if you want to say something?
So, um, yeah, we, we have completed each side when, when Jeff was trying to do the pictures, uh, each side, like the planter was about three feet from being finished on the ends. And so yesterday, we finished those pours, and, um, obviously, we're going to have to wait a little bit until they're finished with the sidewalk. And, uh, then we'll be able to make the, smooth the dirt apples in the land right now, um. So our most immediate neighbors can tell you that we work in our yard almost daily, nothing is ever stagnant. It is constantly changing, we sometimes have ambitious goals for our garden that may take more than a few days to accomplish. Then has been the case for our race bed in the front yard. Midway through construction, we were called to one of our rental properties that had a paying funding fee. Unfortunately, the repair required demolition and replacement of the kitchen. This project took three and a half months, by the time it was finished, spring was here and we had to begin preparation for our garden. The timing is regrettable, we definitely wish that we didn't have to put off the completion of the race bed. In the midst of it all, Matt's chronic pain, which limits him from continuous strenuous activity, became more intense, forcing him to take several days off. The only person that can tell you that something in our yard is discarded is Matt. Even the dirt on our driveway, which shimmies just look like dirt, was purchased especially from neighborhood home improvement and plant stores, and improved by us by adding nutrients ingredients. This is evident by the squash, tomato, and sweet melon plants that grew and produce food voluntarily in it while waiting for their new home. Other than the house in which we live, we own six other rental properties in the village. Like our neighbors, we care about the presentation of the village because we enjoy having a certain quality of tenants in our homes. People who keep the property in good condition and leave the houses will maintain when they eventually move. In conclusion, it is unreasonable to think that people from another household and from a moment's glimpse believe that they can look at a yard and think that they know exactly what is happening there. Our yard is like a humble bed, if you don't like it, wait a minute. The purpose of our garden is simple, to provide nutritious food for us, our neighbors, and anyone who stops there, or to tell them how they can grow their own nutritious food. Your purpose is supposed to be to protect that right. I'm sorry ma'am, but they have the right to do that, this is not an H O A.
So I have, I have the pictures, if you would like.
Anybody? Dave, you want me, uh, to update pictures for her?
The same pictures from Jeff.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, took this morning?
Yeah. I can do that more, you know, the thing is, the, you know, our, our, uh, we, we just get presented as what it was, not what it is.
Is there any other questions? So, uh, so the order, the order of those pictures out there, you know, if we, I kind of thought you almost had several kinds of, of the, or sick, or on vacation or something.
Well, he was sick for a part.
Cause that's bad.
And like I said, from other parts, we had to work on the original property. But it's gone now, what they're looking at is gone.
How long was it there?
It, it was there several months. I, I don't know which one he was this time to come back.
We have code in place to enforce things like this, not be there several months.
You not, you don't, you actually have a code that says, uh, sorry, you actually have a code that says that you're, uh, due diligence, and, uh, actually, due diligence is what we would call a flexible standard, which you could put at anybody at any time. It's a vague standard because it's not defined. So what you're doing is telling us that, that you have to do it in our time. I can't necessarily do it in your time.
Yeah.
Well, I do have the right to do it, there is no code against what they did, uh, I already talked to him about this. There is no code that says that I can't do this. As far as the discarded items, they're not discarded, that's a stern data. It has a higher end and a lower end, and the only reason it has this is because I put a P on there because it had to go down into the ditch and stay up while I poured the concrete. There's nothing wrong with the table, there's nothing wrong with any of my tables, I have the right to put tables in my front yard, or in my side yard, or on my driveway, or anything else else. If you don't think that, then maybe we need to go ahead and go to another court.
I'm, I'm sure our visitor would have, would think that the dirt in the front yard needed to wait until she had a kitchen back. Because we do that, we don't, we don't hire someone else to build the kitchen, we built the kitchen. Uh, uh, we can't turn the clock back and say, hey, water leak don't happen right now.
Well, let me, please, is, two months is a long time for grass to be that, uh, is it?
I didn't say.
Well, the grass, only grass that was that, that high, and was just a little bit, was on that, only on that, uh, that mound, the rest of the grass wasn't like that.
So, and, and you can choose which part of your.
And, and not, and not only that, so I, I weeded that mound, my wife mowed the lawn, uh, every week, lawn was mowed. And I weeded that mound, and I weeded it at other places around the yard until there were, uh, three tomato plants and a bunch of, uh, melons and squash growing in there, and then I backed off on it because I didn't want to kill the plants. But after I got an abatement, I moved, I pulled the plants away and took a chance on messing them up to go ahead and, and weeded the thing. So I did, I weeded the thing after the abatement, so that was done. Then we moved them, and I was very careful, as best as I could, to make sure that, uh, my tomatoes didn't die while I put them in the other, two of them did, but a couple of them lived. This is the second time that you've killed my vegetables. The first time was whenever I had a truss on the side of my house and there wasn't a law. And what you did is you went and you passed a law, and then you lied to me and told me that I had to take my trucks down, or I was going to get a seven hundred and fifty dollar a week ticket until I took it down. And then what happened? You lied to me, it should have been grandfather, but I took it down because she was nervous about, uh, getting a, a fine on our house. If you want a fine, you fine us, I will not pay it, I will go to the next court, and the next court will talk me.
I don't understand the point of this conversation, you're, you're reprimanding us about a pile of dirt that is known longer.
I'm requiring a fix.
Hold your, hold your comment for just a second. The point of the conversation is that you have had a pile of dirt in your driveway, growing tomatoes or whatever else.
Not there.
It is not there now, however, I've been hearing about this for three years, from.
Oh, well, correct.
We have.
I drive by your house. So I. I don't personally, there is, there is a pile of dirt in your driveway for at least a year, because I drive by it all the time. The thing is, is that if you're planning to have a pile of dirt in your, at your property, there are ways to do it that makes it clean, tidy, and fit into the rest of the neighborhood. And that's what we're talking about, is that you have to do the things that are against what you want to see in the village. Will we see our code in here, please?
Okay. You'll be fine.
I'm not lying, I'm, I drive by there all the day, all the time, almost every day.
I have the interest to agree.
Well, that's your right to say that I'm lying, and we're on record, so you can say that, but I'm disagreeing with you.
Oh, but it has been removed.
I, I, I now see the fact that it hasn't been removed.
So they're talking about dirt is, really doesn't do us any.
Thank you.
Look, we're letting you lie, you're lying, so we.
No, we did not.
Wouldn't we still?
They brought that.
So, what, what we have is basically an ongoing project that's over there, and so the, what, the calls that we get in are for, you don't consider them, but they call the discarded items, which is your wood structures that you're using to pour your concrete.
Right.
The wood, uh, bench table that's in your driveway, those are the things we're getting complaints on. So, like I said, it, it's, it's basically when people go by, they want to know what's happening there, we've explained to them that you have a project that's going on. However, it's just been extended a period of time, so that's where we started the abatement to see where we need to go on it.
Well, I'm very sorry that you are put in the position of, I'm going to be answering the question, I want to know again, I can make a sign for that, if you would like.
A sign?
A sign, I can put a sign in the yard that says, hey, we're making a bed that's used for, to pour the concrete. We have to put the concrete mixer on top of the big table so that you can go down, you can pour down into the floor.
Did you say you finished pouring concrete?
No.
We.
If they have one, and we haven't finished, or they have another bed that started, it's. Once you've done. Thank my wife, because it's not going to be as big as the other one.
Are you still going to need the table off before you?
Okay, so, when, before we started, or, when we first started the project, and before the kitchen case was in, uh, uh, we made another, I'm not sure that it's, that you can see it in the pitch, not that.
There's an end over between the bed and the house, that's the start of another one. I don't plan to build the other one as big as this, less than half the size. It'll take one, two, probably three pours, and then we're done.
I'm, I'm picturing up at three, that I gave you from the top left corner, there is one end of another bed that he wanted to pour, we, we already have a concrete bed. So he, he wanted it to be as big as the front, and I said, no. So we're going to make it much smaller, and, um, but it's, it's still going to take some time, we have to dig a trench around it to pour the footing, and, um, then we'll pour the sides, so now, um, anyway, so that table that he puts this, the concrete mixer on, is, will not fit through a gate. It's very wide, so that's why it remained, and it's very heavy. But I hope that he takes one side, I take the other side, and we can move the.
Just can't move it in the backyard between the four.
Right.
That's not much.
Okay, Ken, what all of the abatements or violations, what all has been completed?
So going through the, uh, abatements, the ones that were reminded are what we would consider the discarded items, which are the wood structures.
Those are the wood structures in the front yard around the raised bed.
Correct. Right, um, so, uh, like I said, the dirt mound has been taken care of, so we're good there. And the other one is, uh, like I said, the code officer had high grass, with the dirt mound was taken care of, and the question would be, what's dirt sticking out of the planter? Um, I know when we, when we first started the project, we discussed it, and we looked at it as being basically merely a, a planter bed, um, and we didn't, or I didn't differentiate any difference with it being up next to the house, or in the middle of the yard, as long as it's, it was two feet high. Um, it's out of the right way, I guess, the question that I think that I would have is, do you foresee a time limit as large when it would be completed? And your structures can go away?
Well, you know, it takes a couple of days for, easily let it dry, you know, between a couple of days and a week, and then pull the forms off. And then we can put another footing in, and it takes a couple of days there, and then we can put another form on. And as long as we don't get interrupted with, you know, some.
Make sure we can.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, things like a, a water tank, bolling or something, that's easy to go to Home Depot and buy one, it's, it's a day or two at most to get that back in. But if, uh, the floor blows up, and you have a, a slight leak, and you have to pull the kitchen apart, then you're going to need a little bit more time because I can't, I can't do everything at once.
You wouldn't want us working in the front yard in the middle of the night?
So, I think the one thing where the, where the city is kind of stuck in the middle is, we do kind of what you introduced earlier, that every day it looks a little bit different.
Right.
So we've received calls of, you know, why does it look like this, and we'll go out there one day, and, you know, you don't do practice anymore, but we had our five gallon buckets, so we go out there the next day to see what it was, and the buckets are gone.
Right.
And then next week, they might be back, so those are the things that we're.
That's one of the points that I would like to make, is that I actually am trying to, to comply to a point with what the city would like, and, and to what the neighbors would like. It is actually my property, so it's my property, it's not the city's, and it's not the neighbors. But at the same time, I don't want to make my neighbor unhappy. So I tried to do things that will decrease that, there aren't any more buckets with the bottom cut out of them in my yard. I did that only because, uh, to keep, I lost half my yard the first year I cut it up with tiller. It went down the alley, that is not always mowed.
Yeah. The alley is not always mowed.
Uh, anyway, that's just an aside, but, uh, everybody has issues, anyway, um, I've tried, I, I do try to make things a little more compatible with my neighbors.
So the process of this is that we have to build the form, that takes probably about a day or part of the day, a day for, for him because he, it, he has the rest of his mind, he can't, because of his physical limitations, he, he just can't, he's not, mentally, he's a workhorse, physically, he cannot be anymore. Too much of a fault, et cetera, anyway, so, this, when the, uh, sidewalk is finished, and we can get to the end, then we'll be able to, now, we have, we have not poured footing on the end there that you see in this picture. We didn't pour that footing because we wanted to make sure that everything lined up first.
Well, we would, we were planning on putting this back in, it was the real.
Right.
But because we, we, we got the abatement, we said, okay, let's try to help Ken out and stop everyone from complaining. No, it's not everyone, it's some, there's lots of people who are complaining, I know that, but I just said, okay, let's, let's go rent a skid steer. I always thought about that, that was the first one, anyway, so I, we, we did that, my wife ran most of the times there than me, actually. And we put all that dirt, and I just put, to try to comply with what we did.
But we couldn't, we couldn't smooth it out because we didn't have the end finished.
I mean, if you want me to leave your hand off and just leave the two stone set out there, I'm not thinking, look very well, but if that's what you really want to do, then I'll probably go to the next court, or back, whatever. Okay, what's, what's the city, what is, what is the city's stance right now?
Yeah.
What, what do you want?
Um, I think what they do is, with the building materials out there, with the unfinished project, and understanding that is that our code specifies how much time that they have to come to compliance, they said we cannot get it done in that amount of time, we just want their appeal in it. I mean, I don't think we can give you perpetual extension, and I don't think that's fair, but I mean, how much, what do you foresee having that planter finished?
Okay, the front planter is, as soon as they finish the sidewalk.
Uh, they can't start the timer until they finish sidewalk, because I can't.
And we have to pour footing on the end.
Can't get it in there, right?
Right? We have to pour footing on the end.
So that's, that's a week, the two weeks tops probably on that, if I don't have a question.
Because it's.
And I'm happy to call the city and say, okay, I have a question, let me tell you what's going on. So is the city going to, are you saying the city's going to put you behind on that issue? Well, they're doing a dispatch right now because they're working on the sidewalk. They just got a sidewalk to be done by the end of the year.
Then my pictures are here.
So sidewalk, I'm only able to secure it. Then you can start with your time. Right, now, as soon, as soon as they get it poured, and sap can get on it.
So that end cap can probably then, where I. So, that end cap can probably then, I, what I'm hearing is about three weeks.
Two?
No.
Well, three weeks with the, with the, uh, if-
The sidewalk.
It depends on how fast they pour the sidewalk, maybe for a-
What it drives.
Yeah, three.
But we don't have to have, they're not putting, they're not, my understanding is that they don't have to replace our drive, that our driveway's flat enough, that they don't have to move any of the driveways, so, that helps. But we still will have to wait until the-
Okay, so you're suggesting to the city to relax a little bit on the time limit for your abatement, your abatement?
Yes.
Okay, so what, give us-
I just like trying to do it.
Okay, cool.
So- Okay.
I have a question on that too, because I, I think I remembered you saying that even if you get the planter finished, the table will need to be upright.
Okay, I'm just-
I said, I said it.
Well, wait, okay.
We need to keep it out there.
You see this?
This part of the- They have the table.
All right. So, it will, I'm gonna guess, I don't know, I'm not a sidewalk guy. The sidewalk guys are not here. I'm going to guess that it will be about a week for them to finish our yard with the sidewalk, so that we can put heavy- Okay.
Do you need to do any work while they're, while they're doing their deal with you, nothing up front?
Well, that end cap, do we have not have a good picture of how close that end cap is to, to the sidewalk? I don't know. Maybe not.
Tell us, we're, we're not asking for a picture, we're asking you to tell us what you can and can't do, so we can understand what, what to do.
Okay. So, I'm guessing it's gonna be a week for the, for us to be able to do any more on that. And when it's finished, when we feel like we can get out there with that, that's enough their sidewalk, or our sidewalk, uh, then we'll have to pour the footing, and we have to make a form for the, for the top part, the second layer, and for that. And so, we're guessing that that will be three weeks. The, I mean, I'm trying, rough guess, and that's all I can do.
Is that the only piece of-
No.
The time, so they have another part?
Okay, so that's what I was telling you a minute ago, but there is another planter back there.
On the side of the house.
Well, it's behind-
It's between the back and the house.
It's behind?
I have a picture.
Yeah.
There's a picture over right there. I've got a picture, you can barely see the corner around the right, but it's, it's-
It's gonna be the same length as in front.
No, I won't let it go to that big. We, we had that argument. Okay, so, but it'll, I mean, so, while we're waiting for the sidewalk to finish, we can start digging the footing, because all we have is this. So, we'll have to dig the footing out and around, and that's gonna be a smaller table like we had before.
It's a, it's a six or seven inch.
Okay.
Ken, when are they supposed to originally have this deadline?
Uh, so, in our city code, there's, there, we have a code that sets a deadline on completion of the project. The, these are basically just planters, we didn't characterize those as such structures, or permit was required on that. I know, when we, when they started, we did have discussions about, uh, the height that we created, from grade levels and the top of them, the planter cannot be more than two feet away, of the top to the outs, distance from the wire hangers. But as far as time limit, there's nothing that says it has to be done by a certain time. And I think that's where we got with the dirt pile. When they first talked about the project on the dirt pile, we understood, they told us that once the thing is completed, the dirt pile is into that, and that's where the city gave them time to complete the, the project to move the dirt pile, building the terrains, if you would, uh, into that. And so, that's kind of a wrap.
Did the abatement have a date, a date to be completed by then? Did the abatement-
Yeah, so, we have, we have an abatement for the abatement. But the abatement, like I said, we built it for the fact, so that's in their appeal, they request a time. It's kind of a wrap. The, the issue I think that we get into is just trying to figure out whether the, would we consider the construction projects as property done? And, uh, because we get, we get complaints about that, we do get complaints about, in the summertime, when you have the tables out, when there's produce on them, we get complaints about-
The plants.
Yeah.
We don't put produce on the table.
The plants. They, uh, we get complaints about, you know, the traffic around there, people coming in.
There's, there're usually more than five or two people. That one person at a time can almost never run a, a large good day.
So, the abatement really didn't, I don't think when we, when you did the abatement, that that back structure was taken into consideration, am I right?
Um, well, the structures are part of the abatement. It's the materials that are being used to construct.
Right.
So, the wood structures, so, because we consider those discarded items. I know that you consider them essential pieces to do the construction project, but, uh, complaints that we get is, hey, they've just got this wood structure that sits out in the yard.
So what? I mean, I have, I have walked this neighborhood three times during, while I was campaigning for various things, and many yards have lots of structures out in the front yard. So, this is just another structure. I mean, just because one person sees it as an eyesore, or chooses to see it as an eyesore, so they can have something to pick on somebody about. You know, somebody else, we have lots and lots of people who tell us how appreciative we are of the work that we're doing. And we never sit down, we never take a vacation, we work every day on it. And the only time that we didn't work on it was when we had to work on a kitchen. And my neighbor is very appreciative of us working on her kitchen, so that she can have cook. So, I don't know what you want us to do. I mean, we can leave it like it is, and leave that like a tombstone over there, not finish it. There's a lot of people who have, um, chairs in their front yard, and all sorts of things. And tables, yeah, whatever. So, we can't turn back the clock.
Okay.
Do we have, do we have good questions?
Six to ten weeks is what you're thinking for completion?
Yeah.
And you need to get that changed, is that, is that what I was saying? Don't have much, basically.
Yeah, and as long as, you know, I can't, I can't say that it's not gonna rain three to six weeks.
Or it's not.
And it's raining for three to six weeks, I can, I can, but I'm just-
This is totally a do it yourself project.
Everything you do is do it yourself.
Everything is do it.
Okay.
I've got another question. Did you get those?
I'm good.
Sorry. Thank you all. We have Elizabeth, who, we're looking to do this, so, what do we can do on that?
I am not the only one. I know there are several people that complain, but nobody wants to tell me, and be up there, because they're afraid of backlash, or what people are gonna say. I live directly across the street. I see the buckets, the tables exchanging money for vegetables in the driveway. I have pictures. And I sent you pictures, I sent Dave pictures, and I've been told that it is a donation. And I have people come down on the garage sets and say, oh, well, they say they take different donations for different things. But as far as these concrete structures go, and the dirt pile, it's been going on for almost years. I watched Dave. There has been days since the abatement that nothing has happened. They'll go out there and they'll be for twenty or thirty minutes, move the plants on the dirt pile, and then they'll go and ask for rest. I don't know what's going on in the yards, but I know that it impacts everybody in the village, and our home value. I've tried to sell my house, I've had several real estate companies come and say, if you put your house on the market, what we look at across the street is going to affect your property by at least twenty thousand dollars. And as, as far as them saying the sidewalk impacts the finish of the concrete barriers, the con, the sidewalk is coming this way. They have to finish the end of that concrete area, I call it one. And the sidewalk will not impact them finishing. I watched them all day yesterday work out there, and they had another woman out there, and a little boy out there with them, and they worked on it all day. So, there's no reason they need that much additional time to finish what they're going to do in using the sidewalks as an excuse. That's all right.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Um, that's all the public comments we had on that, so, I think it's time for us to discuss a little bit. So, I'll start, because I've had a whole huge reach out to me, and to be honest, I have heard conversations about this for, you know, the two years that I have been, almost two years that I've been on council, I've heard a conversation for multiple years before that, when I was on planning and zoning, about different things that were going on, the way the property looks, the way it's kept. You know, I personally will stand by the fact that I feel like that driving up and down Sunday all the time, I've been looking at the dirt pile with some sort of growth on it for almost a year, if not more. And if it's moved out of the driveway now, which it is, that's fine, but now we have it, you know, overgrowing in a, in a, a concrete structure at the front, that is, you know, it, it still doesn't look like a garden, it looks like a weed pile. So, to me, you know, we've given time, they've had time, you know, giving them six to ten more weeks. Okay, but you know something's gonna come up, so it's gonna take three or four months, and then something else is gonna come up. So, how long would we actually get those past my thoughts? Fair question?
Yeah. I can, okay, we've finished it. They're on a corner, so I don't see how this sidewalk totally impedes their being able to work, because they've got a driveway that enters from, from Heffron. And they could be working on this, on that side of the sidewalk, and I don't, I don't, I don't see, but, I, I don't see why that isn't something that brings all the work to a stop.
Well, I mean, honestly, if, if it's a situation of not having manpower to do it, at some point you have to make a decision, whether or not you have one people to help do things. That would, that would be how I would handle something like this.
Yeah.
But, that's me.
Well, especially the, except the people who run all the time, it's cool. But that's what I thought too, I mean, that's normal trees, but still, a huge project, it's their responsibility. So, I understand that too.
It's kind of your, your career. I'm, I'm a gardener, I have two old, I have two old drugs, like, if I, if I'm going to do something on the drug, I get done. I don't think, you know, Jack stays for six months.
If we're working a construction project, we don't do anything, I'll be able to, you'll see all the time.
Yeah.
Inside, outside, you know, you cover it, you do something.
Yeah, I think about that.
So, I'm actually, I know this is a different too, you know, there's, I've heard a lot of things here. I'm sorry, you know, but then I, I think about the folks that are looking around there, and all the complaints, and it's time for something to happen. If, if you find insurance, go help me do it, or you can, you know, you can take out a loan and finish it off, it's your responsibility. It's my responsibility.
So, I look, I'm kind of gonna get that quick too. Rex and Keith, in Dallas?
Yeah, pretty close. Private commercial learns all the time, and I have not seen that, it's like, that looks like, we hate these.
You can't hear me, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I work for firms, private commercial all the time, and I've never seen something like those like this. I, I think I'm spending time to allow that, that private management professional to be a solution.
Yeah, I mean, it's been out there for at least since April, so, I guess what we need to do is we need to put a date on when it needs to be done by?
Well, yeah, so-
Is that what we need to figure out?
So, it's a compromise, just put a date on it, it can't be dead date, it's obviously private issue.
Okay.
So, is that what we're looking for? They could just-
So, what's your- There is, there is an activity in order that would require them to complete the project to, to clearly use the spies, kind of on the six.
Okay.
And they appeal that enforcement date, ask them what time.
So, more time, they're almost on six, but-
They're, they're, this is sort of being available.
So, they already have an additional one.
Uh, but, but all that aside, you know, we're understanding this, so, their appeal is for more time, so, you accept their appeal, and just, it basically extend that enforcement date out, uh, certain four days.
Okay. Is, and, do we expedite, or do we-
Yes, you're a very fine question. Really, in the past, I know we've, we've accomplished, accepted an appeal, they've provided thirty or sixty days in the motion. Uh, you're not required to accept an appeal either, uh, into the research.
And if it goes into the abatement, what is, what do we do at that point? Do we go clean it up, or we go finish it, or we go, what do we do?
Uh, there's several remedies available.
Okay.
Again, they do some ways at this point, but, that's basically, you know, the city going and creating a date, and then charge, you live around, probably, for a profit.
Okay. So, I mean, they had, they originally supposed to be done by September twenty seventh. It's now by October twenty eighth.
So, we're a month, we're a month into the mess, and we're more time.
Into the mess, they've already had, they have three weeks more time from initial completion, so-
Which is to my earlier point, I feel like this is a pattern, if it is for the last more time, and that thing's come up to extend it, it's already been granted, so, I think at this point I can, I should suggest another extension. I feel like they've had time to finish. I mean, it's three weeks to finish the end cap, it's been four weeks and the end cap's not finished.
And it was supposed to be in five.
Right.
So, you're suggesting just go on with the date?
It's good, that would be my, my idea of an extension.
Do you feel like the small compromise would be, say, maybe two more weeks?
To, you can.
So, I mean, just, if they give you, you know, just, um, what's your thought? There is cost to the city in looking for the abatement that soon.
Yeah.
So, there's cost to them that is to any route, that is, um, in the past, you should do something, they have, they've rarely been more than thirty days.
Extinctions, yes.
I'm, I'm, I would move for a sort of compromise for, it's two weeks, it's two weeks, basically, whatever we can decide about, I would move for a small compromise.
I mean, that's just me.
I mean, two weeks to say, hey, like, ask people, I was just saying, could we do that? It's not really a good idea.
We've got two weeks, and then we're, and then we're, we're like, it's ours. I mean, it's extended, you're.
Yeah. I mean, I, I can agree with that.
That's something that would be crazy.
At the end, it's, 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 to them, it's hard to convince them if they do it themselves. But again, you gotta think, you gotta think out the laws.
Yeah, I mean, you, you gotta, you gotta figure out how to get it done. And yeah, there's, there's time, trust me, there's probably not that, that started like, oh, can't finish this. I guess we got to find a way to do this. Yeah.
And or like you clean it up, make it a little nicer.
Yeah. So I think, I, I can go more with that, you know, as I go on, extending for two weeks, is that what we do?
Motion to be to stay, is, uh, maybe have an order for a period of two weeks.
When is our next meeting after this?
Next meeting will be Monday, November tenth. It's three weeks play, uh, two weeks would be Monday, November third.
You could provide, I just gave you the next meeting.
Yeah, so next, well, then that would be three weeks, which is supposed to be how long it takes to finish the end cap. So three weeks, so that makes me. So I'll take a motion to, uh. I just forgot the term, say. Say, yeah, say. Stay they made an order for a period of three weeks. So until, until November tenth.
Three weeks.
Yeah. So pick that as the end date, November tenth.
There's a motion for.
Like that, I don't forget that was. No, I'll, I'll accept that. Yeah, that's either one of the moves. So you got, you got, move, there you go.
I'd say.
Motion by Bubba, second argument is stay they made an order for three weeks through November tenth, change to five. Bubba?
Yeah.
Then, Braxton?
Yeah.
Keith? John?
Yeah.
Motion passes, so I'm just here. Good, may I ask questions?
Um, uh, we, that closes the agenda, my.
Yeah, it's just cool, something, and I need to not worry about it.
Jeff, you're coming in.
Answer from the board. Uh, I can't provide any legal advice, we could do that, but we can deal with your court. A district court, I suppose, I think, or, or potentially a municipal court.
So that, that item is, well, we're moving on to item six. Uh, discussions regarding commercial signage identified by the board check.
This is not a discussion. The representative's. And we're starting a discussion on this.
Oh, a session discussion, yeah.
We're starting this.
Yes.
Right, see, once in this, this does, uh. It's, uh, last month, we did have, um, First Liberty Bank approaches with a sign, uh, left is a current, right is a proposed. I, I call it miniature driving, but, um, you know, that's.
Miniature driving.
miniature driving screen.
Oh, that's, uh, that's, oh, yeah.
So that is kind of what they're also, it looks like they're probably going to be expanding a lot more of them. And building another building near Quill. Uh, they blew a third question, said foot print, but, um, Quill, right, we have Quill.
Yeah, yeah, well, very good.
So we took some pictures of where they have, these are similar in size. And current, what we're looking at, is currently depicted by city code. It's a, the purpose to have a discussion to go on site, and we are somewhat restricted, but we have a lot of formal visiting roads that you want to pay attention to the dashboard in front of them and not looking at inside, but there are sometimes where some of this might not be available, I guess. So I don't know that we need to totally reinvent our city code on signage, or maybe we need to come up with a non-conformous sign permit that we process through P and Z for recommendations of council for when that could be something that might be beneficial for the commercial business in our community that would make sense to lose a huge statement.
Isn't that what we already did for those, for those type of signs? Because we did that with our Howard's Luther Church, and the best signs.
That was for electronic messaging, or in this side, the size of this.
This is a fourteen point five note message board, so that, that's long. Because the, the sign itself is, is the same height.
Yeah.
So they were really just discussing the message.
Yeah, that's on board.
The, the reason why we, the reason why a council had to approve the Luther inside is because that was in residential residential area, this is.
Oh, okay, okay.
We have a code that says if it's in residential residential area, which is usually our churches, asking through council.
So basically, this would just be setting up the same process for commercial areas?
Correct. We, yeah, we're looking at some method to look at signs that might not adhere to our code to see that something in the city wants to.
Because right now, they, there's nobody that would get this sign approved.
No, right.
Not even coming to council for a special.
No, but their proposed sign, they, uh, they got a twenty-six feet maximum height, it's gonna be twenty feet on a forty mile hour street. Um, their EMD sign, you know, you see fifty percent of the sign area allowed, which is roughly about twenty-six square feet for their EMD sign. The one that's proposed is a hundred and six square feet, so it's about four times the size of the ones currently allowed by our city code. Um, and those are the, the two major things that they had.
I'm not seeing the Quill break, that's kind of distracting.
It's, it's amazing.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm assuming that, like, Duncan's sign is obviously in the code. So, uh, that's a discussion for a different day, actually, with First Liberty, but.
Was there existing sign grandfathered in?
I, I want to think of those, I try to look back to when this sign was permitted and I'm looking at two thousand and eighteen, probably, which is a little bit before my time review, but.
We had an odd number of, yeah.
Why can't we decide about the signs, even still, I mean, so look at this, as setting a new example, if you want to use something with this, you want to write one, write one, we almost think it's something. If this is different, if this is what we're. Yeah, I mean, I'm. Let's have, let's have a meeting. Is there, you know, is there a compromise? Is, is okay to be, you know, too, too big?
Yeah, but what about the houses across the street?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that there's.
There are enough to watch, so.
First Liberty, across the. It's not a lot, but there's always a message place on there. Just because they're actually being brighter, uh, you know, you have standards for that, how long, as they say, but it's. We're not saying to, you know, to prove this, we're just saying, hey, this might be somewhere, it couldn't be compromised, but we might be across, we want to re-invent our code that this sign can come along. Or do we want the process to where someone kind of say, you know what, there's a traffic light, there's a stop, traffic signal right to the south of it? I wish somebody was right on the corner, you know.
I'm, I'm guessing that there's to a degree whoever makes those signs has some standard sizes, or do they make every sign?
I think they're custom, because Steve had one done, uh, at Charlene's, I don't know if you are.
Oh, I don't think I know.
All the, in her own time, but that was the first one of these signs.
I don't even know.
Yeah, I don't like that. I don't have really the idea of permitting.
I do agree, I have no problem with levels and precedents, where if we can negotiate some compromises in the future, I just. It could also be a slippery slope.
Yeah, and not everyone's gonna be the same, and you know, you may get one that just go, wow, which right there is a stoplight, it's two feet away, you know, or it's, you know, what's, what are they selling, you know? A bank's selling money, so that's pretty good.
Quill Green is also, you know, it's my son Daddy, daughter Daddy, so I don't know what it is on there.
Yeah.
They're on like.
I represent all time, it, it's, it can.
Way to the daddy and the reader show.
So, so the discussion, I think that those are the things, I like the way they have it sit on, is that, is that stone brick?
Yeah.
Brick, I like it. It's very classy, I like it, better than the one they have now, that's one seven eight. Yeah. As far as the sleek look.
No, not question, what's your company assign this date?
What's your current sign?
That's a really nice sign.
Yeah, twenty fourteen.
It was twenty-four, so apart, I'm gonna put damage on toward urban travel, or, uh, bear traffic.
I think, I think one of the, one of the issues that we get into in-house is they present a sign to us, and we, and our job is just to interpret the code, it's either allowed or it's not allowed. But next, very next question is, all right, what's the very next process to, to be able to have? Because we do have in our code ordinances for creative signs, but you have to go down there, it has to meet certain criterias, as far as being historically significant, cultural. Yeah. And so when we went through it, we couldn't put them into those categories as a creative sign. But we didn't know if there's another outlet to say, what you're presenting is a professionally looking sign, and it might look good in that location, uh, but it doesn't fit city code. We get sometimes where we get people that want to make an updated sign, our code doesn't allow them to. A lot of times, if they do a new sign, it reduces the height of the sign. They don't want to lose the height of the signs, and they stay with the old sign, and we don't get something to do come to them.
So their, their current red signs, what, four, seven?
Four by.
Four by eleven?
That's sound.
Four, four, they need to let up the red signs, especially the.
The left side is four and a half by seven, no one.
This is a current sign.
So is the, is the issue here, the sign itself, or like the height?
Uh, two, the, the proposed overall sign is higher.
Twenty sixteen.
Like it's twenty-six, because it allows for twenty. And then the EMD sign is restricted to fifty percent of the sign area total, which gives them like a twenty-six square foot EMD sign. Since it's gonna be a way to.
There's a lineup artist on top of all.
Uh, the lightups in the proposed is the darker.
It's the silver.
The whole line.
Pretty great, it's a great part, but that's the whole thing.
Well, I'm.
That's the whole thing. That's a big working for sign.
Does our sign ordinances also are include like the signs on all these buildings?
Uh, yeah, they, so these are freestanding signs, the ones that are on, you know, your public tax signs. They're the one we set up.
That's a whole other thing.
It, it, it's based off the percentage of, uh, the sign.
Okay.
So including the brick and all, it's.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. And that other one is, the gray one with the star gray one, or?
It's about twenty-six, it's a sign.
Okay, so then we're not doing our, now, we're just doing.
I think it's two different. Yeah. While it says changing the existing sign to have a bigger message board, then I want a brand new sign. Uh, I'm just trying to figure out what's the difference between current and real subset inside the current system. Yeah, so the way we look at it is where they have the current sign to put what they were doing proposed, it would be a structural change, so that's where those five ordinance would kick in. Like I said, in twenty fourteen, uh, the height of the current sign might have been what the ordinance was. If they were able to keep the same cabinet, uh, they could keep the height, but if they do a structural change, and that's where the ordinance kind of kicks in.
As far as the setback and everything, from the streets, I remember in the picture, kind of shows it, it's setback, pretty good distance.
Yeah, so my idea would be a hundred foot highway, so from the center of the night, you have to fifty feet going east and fifty feet going west. So that should be right there on that highway, hundred.
See the sidewalk there too, so it's, it fixes pretty well. It's hard, there's a stoplight on the normal road, I mean, it works out, so I get the street.
So what in the ordinance would you need to make our code more flexible?
I think, and this is just a discussion with most councilor or whatever, but maybe there's one with new, uh, commercial signage, maybe subject to council review approval. There is that creative sign permit process already.
Right.
Yes.
Maybe historical, cultural.
Well, there's several design criteria, I think, such as creative signs.
Really, it's not so much a request to change the code, if you can break down, it's fifty percent on the electronic messaging. Maybe it's not really a percentage, that we, maybe we need to, you know, go back to First Liberty and say, hey, here's what we think you can do with this code, because, you know, fourteen and a half foot electronic message display, that's kind of big. Whereas just every, you don't have a lot of needs to come up, most are in compliance with our code. I think our code is, maybe we should remedy for exceptions to work.
Yeah, it's like, let's just have something like we can do with, with the hours, just kind of do some more.
Yeah.
Because in the next, there's, there is, you know, you know, we can do our due diligence and figure out, maybe work through the case.
I think that's, that will hold the, uh, creative sign provision work to do, and it's not, doesn't have to be a classic sort of sign, it just has to be one of the. I mean, if they were using a similar structure or something like that to that, which have the building built on the side that we have on the ground now, is going to enhance, or have a similar architecture of the building itself, I think that would be one of the criteria.
So you say those are changes?
Because I was, I was checking everything where we say, well, we have fifty foot electronic messaging.
Yeah. Because then, may it's gonna look like.
We also don't want something where it's a stout decision, and it's your firm.
I don't want anything we got, we're supposed to.
We're already getting.
Then how are we T S D then? I just tried to put you.
And the towel, and the towel will be able to.
Where's the sign process? It's kind of like a, 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 a development. So if they have a comprehensive design, sign, and have a version of the building, and use certain elements, then the council can approve that.
That's good on me.
Even if it's slightly varied from.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Would, is, would this fall under the creative sign ordinance, uh, or, uh, part of the code, if it approved?
They would need to tie it to a specific design criteria within it.
Oh, okay, of the new building.
Of the new building, and the, the design criteria is listed in one of the sections, so they would just have to argue now, and it's a design.
Okay. So they could potentially get it approved, this sign approved, with how our code is written, potentially, you know, maybe. Or if we had an ordinance that could, um, allow them to come in front of council and ask to get them approval, so we would need to do that, right?
And if they were built over there, office on top could be killed on the bottom, and like, we got a little more.
That'd be great.
Well, to me, that was, that was the original, that was the original intent. I had a job in my office, because that whole side would talk to the outside, the three story builder. Two, two, two stories building. But it was really nice, and they outgrew it, and they're.
I, I, I would like that, again, and I'm not against what we're talking about, but I, I, I want to elevate to the conscious level. We did, really did argue over this for a longer time before Bubba and Sunny came to the compromise to, to lock it in. But here's the deal, if you all drive down Broadway in Heathrow, they have a look that is, makes it look like a nice town, there aren't these big, different things going on all over the place, it's not like at this, a circus. And we didn't on May Avenue. We had all sorts of exceptions, virtually every kind of business that came in and asked for an exemption, or exception, or waiver, got it. And we had not a good look. And in fact, the best look that we had was when they made all the buildings for about five or six blocks look the same. There were, there was some continuity there, and that was, that was a, a major concern at the time. And, um, now, Evan had to change it for I thirty-five, you know, but, but they held firm through a lot of people coming in saying, and they only allow like monument sign, or, 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 I don't know, ten foot sign, but they're, I mean, they're, they're very strict.
Yeah.
But that's gone through multiple councils with them, that they held the line. And fifty years later, or forty years later, whenever they instituted it, 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 it has a look, I mean, that's a good look. And, and, um, I, as I said, that's just a concern, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I want everybody to be thinking of it.
You said it's, walk to your point, and one of my conclusions anyway, is you put a monument sign, it is all consistent with what you're building. You can't have a sixty foot sign on a monument sign. We already have thirty foot signs in it. And we can't, people won't come in and say, maybe put a monument sign on a building, competition up there. You just can't do that. So, but this is a compromise, you know, we're, we inherited what we inherited, and we're not gonna make people put that on our signs. You know, so that's why I like your idea of compromising and looking at it.
It's, it's not one way or the other, it's a way to fit what, what the government wants.
We can sit down with them and go over the creative sign line, which we have, you have to then structure that as a, as a model. And with them, I'd listen.
And I like the idea, if we can make, tie it in some way to be a look of the, of their buildings and, and all that.
And that area out there is really, down the avenue is really nice, you know, all the way down Heathrow, so. It's just getting better with this, with developments going up.
Yeah. So anyway, I, I, again, I'm not against what we're saying, I just, I just want it to be in everybody's mind that there will be other people coming in with a great idea, but they need to be ten or twelve, or thirty feet taller than everybody else.
If, if they, if they do, if they are able to figure out how to get the sign the same, same height as what they have now, which is twenty-six feet, you know, they lose, if they lose a foot and a half on vertical on the screen, there is like a, it's still a big screen. You know, so, I, you know, I think there's some compromise within there, gigantic screen, but still the inside different.
So why not, why not go for the, oh, you might have to bring down the shoulder.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
That was a great, raise something else.
Congratulations.
All right. All right, moving on to agenda item number seven, review of reports. Take us away.
Okay, um, Bev, on this one, here this evening, you get a question with financial reports, please feel free to reach out to her directly. I should try to sound through, before I go to you with the answer on it. Uh, sales tax report for two October. Now, we're slightly a little bit low budget projections, but, um, that's probably about less than one percent really, so we can know that was a big number to us, and so they were kind of okay. Uh, we see two months of low collection, two months of high collection, so we hooked up the balance out. Uh, used tax, about the same category of.
Cause they don't get the money until they were paid to the.
It's a mess, really, I mean, you get some of the prepaid, some of the pay, there's really half a month, it's, it's so, that's why it's not the same for a month.
Cause they're supposed to be new at the point.
Yes, usually we have a lot of the ten, they're, they just came up last week. Uh, so, correct news are looking well, uh, figured real quick on the, uh, update, about the badges. Great time for that, the police department was down by eight to three, came back and tied it up, forced it over ends, and then that wedding gift I want to run, uh, there really weren't that many controversial calls. City attorney and prosecuting attorney were the umpires, and no one really looked hard. Had great attention, we needed, came out, I didn't worry about four, five hundred dollars, which is what they expected. Uh, we had Mission barbecue there that were doing, uh, food donations for food, there was things to make, raised some backing to it. Special weapons on the ground, they were after Ross's sign, Williams jersey, and the nice enough flag for Mary to fly. I don't know, I think Kevin Reeder won the flag, I don't know how much he paid for it, but, um, I quit bidding when he surpassed. Uh, as I said, Kevin graduated from the Illinois Municipal League Leadership Academy, he's got some award there. Bonnie Upgraff retired, had a retirement ceremony for her. She landed with four police officers, attended the Leadership Institute. Really thrilled, they, they enjoyed it, they had fun, got some good stuff out of it, and the future home of the Northside YMCA is up. Just barely cut off Mater's picture. Looking back at the arts festival, just fantastic events. You know, it was a pleasure watching this thing come together, and always having this vision that we would have something built for you. The people that were there, Village Arts Association just did a phenomenal job of taking this from an idea into reality. Jen was there, she was working booth for a while, selling t-shirts, allowing people to paint rocks and just let people know what to do, so. Great turnout all around, beautiful weather, um, they had a lot of music all day long, so, uh, just really, really great. We had a lot of people came to town.
Looks so clean.
Right, very much, so, so it was for a lot of vendors and school trips down to the bottom. Uh, we are wrapping up our GIS traveling project, so if you've gone on Wednesday, look at the map, it's like a twenty thirteen P E F. Uh, so we're going to have that GIS.
We're going to have to add our work hours and actually see them on that.
Might be able to see, I guess where we're at, but then overlay from zoning, overlay from warrants on that. Mentioned our recruiters, they're not today, next month, Little Two, playing unit development applications, they'll go to plan the zone, and then come before the council, they'll go for the Britain Sport Club, and the Northside, Northwest YMCA.
What's the greatest square? That.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get one from you. We sent the notes out today, they should publish Wednesday, and once we get all the documents uploaded, we'll send you links to you afterwards. And take a moment, just on our animal shelter, we had an incident about two weeks ago with residents that had thirty something dogs in it. Uh, we had some great support from those from the city, Mustang, Bethany, a lot of our surrounding units came up, took a couple and helped dock out, so. It was really a horrible, tragic event, it was just wonderful that everyone came together, all the volunteers stepped up, we had people bringing, you know, money for shots and vaccine, people bringing food. So it was really nice that we could hear you come together, I think we're back down, probably like normal control population out there, but, uh, Kevin and, and Briar is our interim animal control officer. He runs first, Briar's first week on the job, and.
Someone asked me about, uh, buying some goat, some goat food, and I said, I think you have to go to the, uh, to, 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 to the head of the division there and ask what they do.
You can bring dog food up, you can.
It didn't matter if it's.
Dog.
Yeah. Okay, that was nice, this person's a good donor.
Yeah, but we're able to be happy to take, so. Uh, again, the, the Arts Association, I think they're skilled on recovering, everything that they should. Uh, there's a lot of hard work, we have a phenomenal day event, and I'm not saying that just because there's shorter periods here, but, um, they, they did a fantastic job, very well organized, we'll tweak a few things. As much, like I said, and giving them all credit, the Village Arts Association function, the city just supported.
You think we tend to, is it next year? Do you think there's?
No. It's a lot, and there's a whole lot of them, but, um, you know, I think, I think we can increase volunteer.
If we had enough interest.
Find us back with the volunteers.
Jane?
Four hundred and ninety.
Mark and John Sosa, when they, they set up the tents, Friday night I was there till, I came in the afternoon, and they were working it, it was eight thirty before they got out. And then when it was over, they, my dog got shut down, like loaded up all the tents and everything, I mean, and then everything looked fine, we were there.
They did a great job, so, Friday, when March crew showed up Monday, they were, they, they pretty believed it, and they were really happy, so.
Got to go away from my high school roots, nice.
Good fundraiser for, uh, tips on that, you know, what the Cubs was, what's the difference?
Uh, we raised at the back of groceries thing, I think we raised twenty six, twenty seven hundred dollars.
Wow.
I think the, the softball game, we raised, I'm gonna say thirty, thirty-five or something.
The one, the place one?
Yeah.
The one last year? Followed by six years of the fire park, or.
Please, I want two years.
I had one of my friends, that, 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 uh, yeah, two, called me and said, uh, something's going on, there's a place, we're over in the village. I think some of them are bagging groceries. I said, hey, you're the guy. So, a lot of folks knew about that, and it kind of circles, that's, that's real cute.
Great event, and we want to thank Cassidy for letting us use her field, and she's a great supporters, and it's great occasion to have that game. I said, I, I think they're pretty, pretty proud to keep the truck good, back up at the P D this year. Uh, just street department, doing what they do, pouring the concrete.
There, anyone wish for a kid, is that east of it? It was, or it's west of it? Got the four houses down from the.
I see, I see.
Yeah, the lots of them sale, yeah, it's not about.
They did put that in the house this week.
I forgot, I was going with the open house, did you go in there?
Yeah, the sidewalks on the Sunday were looking great, they've actually been using them, so fantastic.
The last time we saw, we saw the best, we turned around, walked back out.
Yes. I mean, they say the walking around, our toxins, where it looked like it had, it had bored, and they had, but they had filled in the cracks, and so I was scraping up, but, you know, whatever that stuff is, it's very, very tacky. That was lovely, but yeah, uh, sidewalks look great, so. Uh, what was I going to say, yeah, uh, no, uh, council numbers. Oh, sorry, I missed that. You can never. Go ahead.
All right, just, uh, some of our orders have a way today, you follow up, said Jane said, I'm going to do a special session. Uh, it was a busier season than usual, but right here, I mean, it's one of my guys, so probably getting out of three or four, possibly, ordinance is coming up next, and he wants to do some things. Uh, as well as a comprehensive, uh, provision.
Sorry.
Just been very hard on that, I'm not joking.
Say, do we have any one, well, we got the Arts Association, I think they're all, they're nation down. And you have, you have stuff? And if you have any, uh, other. Okay.
It was great, thank you, it was awesome.
All right, well, with, okay, so anything else with comments? Uh.
Uh, I had one, just another update on the, the Village Arts Council, it was a really good day, and, but, um, um, I don't know if you guys walked over off Main Street Avenue, seen the new habitat homes that are being built. Um, but they're coming along very quickly, very nicely. Um, I stopped to talk to a lady when I was out walking the vet, and they are supposed to be done, she said, over the next six weeks, so. They're, they're coming on great, I think from what I understand, a couple of them already been sold, or at least one of them has. So they, they look nice, there's some retention on back there, they're living this big thing, so hopefully that will help with some of the flooding on that side, uh, on this side of.
They can name it's David Palm, he's one of the guys that built Cleveland.
Wait, you know, this David or Ben Glover?
The glove, the club is one they had a four. Try to rest, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, seven.
They tried to get six. Well, we went at this one, we decided we weren't there. And that's all I got.
But, uh, I tried, I tried, I was sitting here, uh, for a long time, and I thought they did a great job. They'll have a chance to see them, but they're, I asked, I'm wondering, I'm going, shall we get some, it's like everybody else, but it's really nice to have them, you know, to have them in that area. I've already seen people, you know.
Yeah, I saw people using them on that, speaking of, is that supposed to go all the way down to Britain? The sidewalk?
Uh.
Is that me?
Something? Yes.
Okay, is it?
It started, it was.
We were wondering that. It's okay, I just want to make sure it's going to go to Britain, it's kind of weird, really, isn't that weird?
I'm pretty sure that it was supposed to.
Yes, now, the sergeant reported to Britain, they had their schedule, I think it was more, it was really, I waited, they were coming to call, and so I had, I don't know how to handle.
The, the engineers that spent.
Yeah. I understand, you know, we all, I didn't know if I'd, of course, so, but have new razors?
Razors, it's going to be a fresh eye razor.
And, and in looking at some of their, you know, some of the things that have in their other razors, it looks like it's going to be some deep upgrades, they're going to be done, you know, because it's so new, so nice, it's got to happen, for sure.
Oh, and then they all shelves are, shelves are.
They, 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 so we've been there the other day, and it was on sale.
Yeah, if you don't need some, or if somebody's there, they have some on sale, I think I read about this.
Well, I think, I think some outside seating, things like that, which I like better than the, you choose, it's any one. Um, so that's, that's going to look really nice, um.
Yeah, shots five.
And for the council, I, I think that you, you've noticed five, there's, um, thirty, there's. Sure, yeah, I'll be there, I'll be there, I'll be there.
So I, I'll be there, are you going to, you're going to be there?
Don't discuss any businesses.
Sir.
The uptown grocers, the architect designed it. Designed it based on a model they saw in Typer Texts, a grocery store owned by Brookshire Grocery. Brookshire's bought razors out in twenty twenty-two, and it's just kind of like a fester, so they were pretty happy to show it, but that's the, it's going to be here, it's going to be our store, and.
Yeah, and it's their standards.
I was wondering if that was.
For good or bad, they're bringing, they're bringing, uh, wine and beverages like that, so. So, it's all.
Uh, just, I, I heard one additional thing with talking about dogs. Um, I have a friend, he's a retired veterinarian, he sent me a message, frankly, I don't know what he was talking about at the time, cause I, I guess I missed all, all the news stories, and I couldn't tell you anything, but he said, he still has his license, and if, if he would, if, if it would be a benefit, he was more than willing to o- offer his time to do whatever that would do, and he thought he could get another, uh, another veterinarian to join, uh, so, for future, his name's Roger Johnson. And, uh, for future reference, he's, he's a, he's a good guy, he, he does a, he did an excellent job with our dogs for three years. But he is retired, and he actually, he was mayor down, what's that little community just north of Wines? That has some historic, some.
That's what? Madison Park?
Madison.
Or Madison?
Madison.
Madison Park, he, he, he moved, he moved down there, and he eventually became the mayor. Madison Park.
So he, he keeps us here before he, what's going on?
Uh, it was a pleasure being part of the, the Lions sign, uh, and they're, and they're still on track, but we see the break right in March. The, the D and Y.
How long will that take?
Ish, yeah, I think, we've got some designs to talk about soon. Exactly, all right, that's all, ready to do?
No, sir.
All right, I would call us, turn, and here you.
No, are you congratulating?